And we're back. Still getting used to the new sound system. Everybody ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to our July 21 regular city council meeting. We'll begin with invocation followed by the salute to the flag led by Mr. Greg Sutton. Please rise.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy that you show us every day. Lord, I lift up this council and pray for discernment and wisdom for this body and for all of our city staff as we work for the citizens of Jax Beach. We lift up our military and first responders and medical providers and thank you for their protection and healing that's through you. And anyone else that has a need today, we continue to lift them up for healing and we thank you for your comfort. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk will call.
Councilmember Golding.
Here.
Councilmember Horn.
You.
Councilmember Jansen.
Here.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Wouters.
Here.
Mayor Hoffman.
Here. Moving on to approval of minutes. Item A.
I approve the minutes from the special council briefing held on June 16, 2025.
Second, we have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
I approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on June 16, 2025.
Second, we have motion and second in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
I approve the minutes from the council briefing held on July 14, 2025.
Second, we have motion and a second in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
Second, we have motion and second in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Council announcements.
I'd like to start by recognizing two special guests that we have. Among many special guests here, we have Mayor John Payton, the former mayor of Jacksonville, and we have Senator Clay Garberow, our state senator. So you'll probably be hearing from both of them later on, maybe not hearing from, but you'll know why they're here in a couple of minutes. But I did want to recognize that they're here in the audience. Is this microphone echoing? Do you guys hear it? Okay, it's not just me. Any other council announcements? Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Chief Smith and our Jax Beach Police Department and volunteers for all the hard work that they did on July 4. We had a really good July 4. It was very safe with really virtually no issues and that's thanks to all their hard work, their preparation. Likewise, with the recent unpermitted event that was happening here at the beach this past weekend. So they continue to do amazing work and keep our community safe and I just want to recognize them and thank them for all that they're doing. I also want to thank Chief Smith for participating in the Beaches Watch Police Panel that was held on July 9, where he did a presentation about the Jax Beach Police Department and provided updates. And if anybody was not able to attend that meeting, you can watch the video. It's very interesting, very informative because all three of the Beach Police Chiefs were there talking about their communities. Super interesting to hear what each of the communities deal with. Certainly, Jax Beach deals with the most, as you might expect. Also want to thank our Public Works Department for taking care temporarily or for the interim, the flooding issue that we have been having around 18th Avenue North and the First Street area. You guys reacted when the citizens brought that issue up and we certainly appreciate you had to do a lot to try to address it. So at least until the turtle season's over with, we appreciate that temporary fix that you've implemented. And then just want to let everybody know in the audience that it's budget time and we are starting to have budget meetings and it's an opportunity for you as citizens to better understand where your taxpayers, tax paid dollars are going. August 1, which is a Friday from 2 to 4, we're going to have a budget showcase, which is a really good overview that the city manager conducts along with department heads to go over. Here are some of the things that we're going to be focusing on in the coming year. And then we start with our budget workshops on Monday, August 4 at 4:00 p.m. We'll have the police, the parks, beaches, and Beaches Energy come before us at that workshop. And then on Tuesday, August 5 at 5:30 p.m., we'll have the executive finance, H R, I T, and legal. And then Monday on August 11 at 5:30, Public Works Planning, Development, and CRA. And then also want to mention, since we have Senator Garberow here, so glad to have you here. Beaches Watch is going to have a town hall with Senator Garberow and Rep. Michael on Thursday, August 9 at 7:00 p.m. at the Beaches Branch Library. That'll be a great opportunity to hear from our state legislators as well as interface with them and share your questions, comments, and concerns. And then last but not least, I want to recognize some birthdays that happened since we last met. We had Councilman Wagner had a birthday and City Manager Stephanopoulos had a birthday last week, actually. And Mayor Hoffman has a birthday coming up July 29, so happy birthday to you in advance.
Thank you, and we will continue to give the gift of not singing "Happy Birthday," so celebrate accordingly. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Thank you to Senator Garberow for your support. This past session, a number of critical items that he helped support in favor of the city and all local municipalities, quite honestly, and I appreciate that very much. This coming Saturday, I believe the date is July 26, the 92nd Annual Menonack Swim will take place here at the beach, which has for 92 years, I think. And a number of strong local swimmers, not the least of which, to my right, Councilman Horn, will be competing. And I have exceedingly high expectations for your performance and I'm sure it will be very strong. For those that don't know, Councilman Horn has won the Menonack Swim a few times and been in the top five or 10 many, many times. Every, yeah, every swim, so all 92 of them. So I think that's it. Thanks.
Councilman Horn.
Thank you for your accolades, Councilmember Sutton. I do, yes, I will be swimming the marathon this weekend. Again, I think it'll be my 33rd, 30, maybe 32nd. I'll have to go back and look. I am actually gonna give some accolades to others. Folks, the City of Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue, as well as members of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, went last week up to Nags Head, North Carolina to compete in the South Atlantic Region Lifeguard Tournament. Over 300 competitors. It was a great competition. The Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue and the Volunteer Life Saving Corps did very, very well. It was group in conditions, to say the least. The water temperature was about 68 to 70 and was flooded with lice, sea lice, and jellyfish. And towards the first day, it was basically rained out, so we did all of the events on the second day. So we went from 6:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening. And it was, it was a lot of fun. That's a first for me, having done this for decades, probably 20, 25 years. That's the first time I've had to do almost all of the events on one day, and I felt it the next day. But it was pointed out to me at the end of the day that one of the officials, I said, "Man, you know, we're doing so well." And he said, "Did you notice that we're the only ones in the water?" There were zero, and this is a huge tourist town, nobody in the water because of the sea lice and the jellyfish and the temperature. And then when he said that, I stopped and I looked and I was so focused on racing, I realized, yeah, we're the only ones in the water. So we weren't smart, but we did well and it was fun to go out there and race.
Congratulations and good luck this weekend. Councilman Jansen?
Yes, I'm going to piggyback off of what Councilmember Golding said. So shortly after the budget season, I want to recognize David Cruz, who was Florida League of Cities, just in the audience as well. We'll be entering into policy committee meetings for the upcoming legislative season. And Senator Garberow, who was a champion in this last one, I'm sure will be a champion again this coming year. And quite frankly, I just have to say, if I had to pick a mentor in the political arena to follow, I think Senator Garberow typifies that and I thank him for all the hard work that he does. And the help that we also get from the league, from David Cruz. He kind of brought me under his wing when I first got started and has pulled me to the point of understanding what I'm doing now. So I thank you both for what you have done up to this point. And lastly, if you get a chance to drive by Tall Pines Park, I know that some of my colleagues have shared this, there's a little QR code there because Parks and Rec is going to be doing an update on that parking and want feedback from our community to see what changes you would like to see in the park. If you can't get to the QR code and access the survey that way, you can always email recreation@jaxbeachflorida.net. That's J A X B C H F L dot net.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Couple of things, like normal, more on the fun side. So if anyone is bored on Wednesday night and looking for something to do, the Tom Coughlin Foundation is hosting an event at Southern Swells, which is always a fine place to go to during the evening. And they're having a charity event there, live music and all types of fun stuff. So it's always great to come out fighting for childhood cancer. So unless you're bored, come meet me. I'll buy you a beer. And then this Saturday, City of Jax Beach is partnering with Central Health System and we're going to be doing childhood physicals at the Carver Center. And, you know, just a wonderful opportunity to work with great partners in our community to make sure that our kids are prepared for school. So if you have friends or neighbors that need to be aware of that, please let them know and we've published it broadly as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else? All right, moving on to courtesy of the floor to visitors, we will start with Charles Delay. Come on up, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Hit the button there to, there you go.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, Senator Garberow, my name is Charles Blake. My wife and Vivian have lived at our house on North Eighth Street for 30 years. There we have raised our son and daughter, enjoyed living in a nice, quiet neighborhood with great neighbors. That all changed a few years ago when the first short-term rental popped up. My neighbor, two doors down, was the first to experience issues, excessive noise, different people coming all the time. There were even times she had packages delivered to her house by the people staying at the short-term rental. And then the people would come to retrieve them from her porch. Then in March of '23, my wife woke me at 1:00 in the morning. I looked out the window and there were police cars as far as I could see. That night, several people were arrested and 14 guns were confiscated. Neighbors behind the property had guns found in their yards. The property today is still a short-term rental. Now, the property next to me has been converted into a hotel or, say, short-term rental. It has been updated to five bedrooms with an heated pool. The pool is 20 to 25 foot from my bedroom window. According to GoodMorningReynolds.com, a local website, which has nine properties on it listed in Jax Beach, says that a house with five bedrooms and an heated pool can gross $100,000 to $150,000 a year. Obviously, this is a business they are running. They're not renting out, it's not some guy renting out his house just to make a little bit of extra money. We've already had to complain about noises after 10 o'clock and other things that have happened since the short-term rental became online. According to our recent story on Channel 4 News, there are over 1,400 short-term rentals in Jacksonville Beach and only 287 properties were sold. This, of course, raises the cost of homeownership, more importantly ruins many citizens' quality of life. This needs to change. Understand that many people come and will never call us problem, but on a daily basis, we don't know who we'll be living to, living by every couple of days. Pretty scary to think of. Then there are the people who come here just to party, those that might retaliate if you complain or report them to owners or police. I know the council can't do much. Maybe we could make quiet hours earlier, starting at 9, maybe make fees higher than with short-term rentals, make them expensive as we can make them. I look forward to using my time and energy trying to get laws changed at the state level. Hopefully, Senator Garberow will hear my concerns and the concerns of the many voters in his district and work with his colleagues to pass legislation that will let municipalities make their own laws concerning where short-term rentals can be located and how long they can be renting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delay. Kevin Phillips. Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kevin Phillips and I'm here to talk about the same thing. I like to call them transient rentals. Our fine establishment here has allowed that to happen because they didn't do anything about it in 2011. I want to start by saying first, first, I'm sorry, 1066 Ruth Avenue. I've lived here for almost 12 years. We, my family and I, when we moved here, we wanted to move into a residential area in a neighborhood. We didn't want to move into an area that was zoned for condos, apartments, or hotels, but now you guys have allowed that to happen. All of our elected politicians that are very greedy. I want to say that I'm not against home sharing. I thought that when it came out, it seemed like a good thing, especially for people that maybe lost a significant other and they wanted to rent out a room, but these have turned into a commercial business. Somebody needs to stop it. In 2022, a report came out from Rent Responsibly, funded by VRBO, indicated 20% of short-term rentals, I call them, again, transient rentals because that's all they are, there's people coming and going, construction workers, you got people you don't know what's going on there, generate complaints and cause disruption to our communities. This suggests that within the industry, their own data, they put this together, said that 20% are problematic. So saying the same thing, 1,400 of them are here in Jacksonville Beach right now. That means at a time, 300 are a problem. 300 of those things are a problem, and I got one right across the street from me and other neighbors here that represent, that back up to it, that have to listen to these guys come in and they just want to party. I understand they want to party. Go to a hotel. Go to a hotel. They're set up for it. They've got security. I just want to say that you guys have some power. You guys issue license to them. If they're a problematic location, you can withdraw their license, you can withhold their license, you cannot give them a license. Start using the data that we have from the police station to start getting rid of these things. They'll go away. They'll go away. Daytona Beach, they spent money. They had legal, they used legal fees to get rid of it. They want to head and say it's so much of a problem, we're going to go ahead and fight Airbnb, and they did and they won. So I don't understand why we don't. You know, again, this is our way of life. All I'm going to say is, if you guys that are elected can't do anything about it, I think the citizens need to rise up and put this greed to bed. Put these places back where they belong in commercial areas. That's all they're asking. That's all these people across the U.S. are asking. Put them in the zoned areas that they should be. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Michelle Tipton.
Good evening. Michelle Tipton, 2333 Azoya Drive, Jax Beach. I'm a 40-year resident and two quick points, I concur with the short-term rental issue. Senator Garberow, I want you to hear, we have similar issues in our neighborhood and have been before the board multiple times and it needs to be addressed. Secondly, Tall Pines Park, I see multiple Parks and Rec leaders and they did a phenomenal job on Gonzalez Park. And I'd like to commend them on that and look forward to seeing what they do at Tall Pines Park. They did an incredible job and I'm just very proud of the work that they have locally. The reason I'm here tonight is specific to supporting our Jax Beach Police Officers. I saw that we've had some new hires. My concern is what's happening in our downtown Jax Beach area. What do we want this area to look like? About two months ago, we had family down at Ocu for dinner, went across the street to the new bar, the rooftop area, and there were 250 people on the strand shouting F-U's to the police, twerking on police, on cars. It was out of control. People with hoodies on, people with masks, and my daughter and her friends, the people that are wanting to spend money downtown are being run off for safety reasons. They're wanting to spend money at the good restaurants and what we're trying to build and over and over and over again. My daughter, who's got two small kids at home, said, "We're not going back down there. It's not worth, we've got, you know, police officers up here. It's not worth our residents' safety." There were hundreds of unruly kids down there and our poor police officers have their hands tied. We're not, we've got to do something about it. And I don't know if that means increasing parking costs, if that means extended paid parking. I know that that drives people into the neighborhoods, but we've got to come up with other options because all the hard work we're doing is being washed away because people are not going to go downtown when it's not safe. They're not. And a couple of weeks ago, it wasn't safe. My husband and I get on bikes and we walk, ride around on the strand. It's not safe. And we've got to come up with ways to deal with that. It comes down to what do we want for our long-term goals? Do we want it family-friendly? You know, my daughter said she saw two families, people that were staying in a hotel across the street that were rushing their kids inside the hotel. These people aren't coming back. These are people that were wanting to invite to our communities to have it be a family-friendly area. They're rushing their four and five-year-olds into the building because they're not feeling safe. We've got to do something about this and it's serious and I know everyone's got to be politically correct on who and what's down there, but we've got to do something about it because we're running out of time and so am I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tipton. That is the last of our courtesy of the floor speaker cards. We'll move on to consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now for our special presentation, I'd like to invite David Cruz of the Florida League of Cities to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. On behalf of the Florida League of Cities and the 411 cities of the state of Florida, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to give a legislative appreciation award to a senator, a public servant, who exemplifies what it means to be thoughtful, accessible, and principled. As Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee this past session, Senator Garberow made a significant decision on behalf of Florida cities. He decided not to place a sovereign immunity bill that would have been detrimental to all of Florida taxpayers on his committee's agenda, ensuring that that foundational legal doctrine stayed in place to protect our taxpayers. I've been doing this for a while and I've come to recognize that a good senator has an open-door policy and allows access to them prior to key votes. But a great senator proactively reaches out to affected parties and does not make up their mind on how to vote on a key issue before voting on those issues. And I know that multiple times this past session, Senator Garberow reached out to multiple council members on key issues and gave them updates on what was impacting the city of Jacksonville Beach. And so because of that and all of his efforts, it's my honor this evening to present a legislative appreciation award to Senator Garberow on behalf of the Florida League of Cities.
Do you want to make any comments? And then we'll try to pull together a photo.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the privilege just to speak for a minute. David, thank you so much for the humbling remarks and also the council members who expressed the same. I give credit first to the Lord for any good that we can do and for the wisdom that he gives. But I just wanted to thank each of you for your involvement. I know many of you have traveled personally over to Tallahassee during session or during committee weeks to talk with us, but I enjoy the relationship we have throughout the year so that we can talk about the issues as they're going on, which is all through the year, not just when session's going on. But that open communication, those good relationships that we have built on, I value those greatly and draw a lot from those because, you know, there's so much going on, there's so much that's kind of in that spin of what we do over there and you can identify with that too, with local issues. But I value that very much, that we can have that communication and speak very candidly about the issues. This is an honor to get this tonight. I did not know that until getting a call, I think, from you, Councilman Jansen, about this. And then, David, it's a pleasure to work with you. I really do appreciate it and your team, they represent you very well at the state level. And there's a lot of issues. There's a lot, even now, that are being, I think, talked about for 2026 as we have just finished the session that we have done this year. So no doubt we'll continue to be in communication, but your work is appreciated and this is a great honor as well. So last thing I'd say, Madam Mayor, is in council, I hear you loud and clear about what the citizens have said about the vacation rental issue. Every year that that issue has come up since I've been in the legislature, I have always voted no because I believe they are taking too much, the state is trying to preempt too much authority away from local government. If anything, we need to turn the tide. I was encouraged this year that we did not have a bill that moved related to that, but what we need to do is shift that conversation and see what we can do, like the citizens have said, and Commissioner Golden, you and I have had many conversations about it, and shift that back to how we can empower the local levels more to be able to, in a balanced way, govern those and make sure that things are taken care of, especially for public safety and then for quality of life and character of neighborhoods and all those things we appreciate. So count on me to continue in that conversation. I look forward to more dialogue on that and just appreciate all that each of you do. It's thankless so much of the time. But thank you for what you do and I am very honored to be here with you tonight. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for seeing us as a resource, as we do you, and thank you for hearing our citizens as we do, you know, every couple of weeks here in chambers and throughout the year. And we always want to be a resource to you as we're looking at legislation and I think that we feel, and it sounds like you do too, that the pendulum on short-term rental, vacation rentals is swinging hopefully back towards more local control, which you can hear loud and clear that we really do need. So let's, do we want to stand behind the dais for a photo or go to the front? Anybody? Go to the front? Okay, we'll meet you at the front. Does anyone have a camera? Moving on to City Manager New Business, we have Amber McClure presenting item A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Amber McClure, Project Manager with the city's Information Services Department. And I'm here tonight to request approval to move forward with the purchase of Asana project management software. This initiative began in response to council priorities and executive leadership team feedback highlighting the need for better project visibility, tracking, and accountability. In 2024, we formed a cross-departmental project management committee. And when the topic surfaced during your March 2025 retreat, we renewed emphasis on selecting a project management platform. We evaluated several tools and spoke with peer cities like Miami, who shared their success with Asana. Of the four platforms evaluated, Smartsheet, Monday.com, Reichen. Of the four platforms evaluated, Smartsheet, Monday.com, Riken Asana. Asana was our top choice for ease of use, public sector fit, and structured onboarding. It's currently used by over seven hundred and fifty government agencies. We're planning to start with fifteen licenses with the intention of piggybacking through Omni Partners contract number twenty-three dash six-six-nine-two dash oh-one with Cobb County, Georgia. Your one cost is twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents and includes fifteen licenses plus onboarding. Implementation is anticipated to begin this summer. We'll start with one to two project leads per department and expand city by as readiness grows. Initial actions will likely focus on loading CIP and strategic plan projects and initiatives. And the plan includes governance, workflow coaching, and hands-on training. This initiative supports your strategic priority of strengthening project management across the city. We're ready to begin and respectfully request your approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry, asthma.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to reapprove the purchase of Asana project management software from Kara Schoffte Technology Corporation utilizing Cobb County, Georgia Omni contract number R two-four-zero-three-zero-three for twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Horn.
Quick question and I'll kind of be brief because, you know, not feeling good. Would, is the expectation that this would be like an annual cost? Is this like what we're looking at roughly every year? So it's like a twelve-month period. Is that, would you assume this to be?
It's a twelve-month period. It's non-renewal. Uh, what will happen is when we get close to the year, Kara Soft will reach out to us with an opt for renewal. And we can, we can either choose to renew or not. If we choose not to renew, we'll have thirty days to export our data. And then Asana will have a one hundred and eighty days to delete all the backup of the data.
Okay. I mean, I would assume that if some of this is education and training, then the next year our cost would be less basically theoretically. And then, I don't know, this is a question for you. Uh, this, this other portion in here, the last attachment, looks like a contract between, is that, was that just the third, the, there's the memo and two attachments. The second, the first attachment is the quote. The second one is a hundred and twenty-four pages, of which I got through about sixty and realized that is state of Texas. I kept looking, waiting to see Jack's beach. Um, there's a lot of hyperlinks and all sorts of fun in there. Is that just for us and for us to see what it looks like?
That is what we're piggybacking off. Uh, they just sent us the entire contract.
Okay. I just wasn't sure about that. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Golding.
Thank you. Uh, this may be a question from Mike. So, we're approving this for one year and it said that, um, that it would, future years expenses will be included in budget planning. So does that mean that it will then become part of the budget as opposed to something that would come back to us again for approval? Like, as an agenda item? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the goal would be for us to pilot test this first to make sure it's going to work for us. That's why we've got the twelve-month agreement, the fifteen licenses. If it is a product that we are looking to use for a longer-term period, then I'm not sure what the options are. I think we've got a couple of different options we can look at, but basically it's a, the equivalent of an annual subscription going forward. And then they would bill us based on the number of licenses that we actually use for the organization. Fifteen is what we feel is the base number, but if it is something that's going to work for us, we may look at going somewhere between thirty and forty licenses before it's all said and done. So that each department can be logging all of their projects into the software. And we could have, uh, not just full transparency, but also project outward for everyone to see what we're working on and the status of those projects.
Okay. And just a, a little side note, um, in my, in my day job, we use Asana. And, um, I, I can, I actually have had the opportunity to use it, not to the extent that it, it, it provides a lot of features and I've only been able to use a small part of it. But so far, it's been very easy to use, so I can understand why you would have considered selecting it.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Um, so considering that it has been a hot topic for us over the last year or so, just around project management and the tools. And, and I'm so excited that you guys are here actually bringing a tool forward. Uh, the, one thing I would ask, assuming this gets approved, and which is probably a, hopefully an okay assumption, um, would ask that, um, maybe the team come back in six months and give us either at a council meeting or a council briefing. I know a council briefing would be more appropriate. I kind of believe that folks would probably like to hear the council meeting because there's, we, we get this feedback a lot from, from folks that attend the council meetings with us. And just give us a status on how things are going. How's it working? How's the tracking? Because the ultimate goal of this is to improve transparency with our residents, right? Ultimately, we, so we can share how we're tracking on things and, um, and how we're staying current with these. So, um, again, I just would, would appreciate that we'd do something like that, bake that into our plans for the next six months. And, and thank you guys for not letting this drop and championing it and moving it forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Anybody else? I don't think I've ever been excited about a software purchase, but I am very excited about this. So, I could, I was like, I feel it, John. I can't wait to hear how this is going. Uh, okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sanitary sewer repair. Welcome to the podium, Mr. Dennis Barron. You have the clicker. It's been noted for the record.
Does it work? Look, it's her whole PowerPoint that she didn't even do. Hurry up, catch up. Okay, here we go. Uh, Dennis Barron, uh, Public Works Director, City of Jack's Beach. Um, I've got two emergency items, my most unfortunate, uh, stuff that I bring to you. So we've got two sewer repairs, uh, that are emergencies. The city manager has signed off to begin the work and, and get things moving. Uh, the first one is at Oakwood Road. Um, next picture shows you the location of where it is at Oakwood Road, right next to, uh, Lakeview, which heads up to the gate. Um, not sure what else I have. Basically, there's a sketch of where we're going to be working, which is right in the arrow, right between the two lots. Uh, your packet also had other pictures. Uh, what we found is cables, uh, running through our sewer. So we've reached out to all our communication companies. Um, they have all said it's not theirs. So they will all be there when we get it all opened up and we will find out who it actually belongs to. Um, I guess there is one more picture. There you go. So you can see the orange ducks in the middle of the sewer line. So we know somebody, um, did something not so good. So anyway, we will be, uh, having those, uh, on-site. Uh, they're currently de-watering the area right now so that they can be able to dig down to it and get down, uh, get groundwater dropped down to where they can actually excavate to repair. So, we know the repair cost is eighty and some change. And so I asked for a little bit of contingency because I'm not sure what we're going to find out if there's going to be any more or less. Um, however, I do believe we'll be able to hold somebody accountable, whether or not they, uh, are there and fess up at the time or shortly after those cables are removed and all of a sudden we have a problem that nobody expected. So, that's what's before you tonight for the first emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And a motion?
I move to reapprove an emergency quote with United Brothers Development Corporation for Oakwood Road Emergency Sanitary Sewer Repair for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Ms. Golding?
Um, Dennis, I went out there this weekend to look at the, the location. And, you know, it just so happens that this is where we have the road that had been repaved, nicely milled and repaved. Is this going to impact any of the roadway that's been redone there?
At this time, we don't believe so because what, what is actually there is outside of the roadway or right in that, right next to it. So, but until they get done, we're not sure exactly what we're going to end up with by the time it's done. So, so I say the repair was all-inclusive, lump sum for, for making the repair. Um, you know, added some contingency just in case we got into something different. Like I said, worst-case scenario would be nobody claims it and when it's cut, nothing happens. So then therefore, everybody's going to say it's not theirs and we'll all walk away with the bill. Um, but we believe somebody's going to fess up once, uh, services begin to be affected in the area. Uh, of course, we are giving them adequate time and we have given them adequate notice so that they could do prior investigation. If any of them wanted to hire somebody to do it before we got there, could be on their dime rather than whatever we're charging or whatever, we're going to get charged for this emergency.
And so they will pay the full bill?
Uh, we hope so. We'll see where this ends up, but, um, in, in the permitting world, uh, we have the ability to be able to, um, kind of hold them accountable because obviously when they're going to need to make a repair, they're going to have to come back to us for more permits. And so obviously, um, they're going to have, if, if, once we can identify who it is, we will be able to hold them accountable.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sutton, this one's hitting a little close to home.
Uh, yeah, almost, yeah. Right around the corner. Uh, Dennis, question on the, the line. I guess what's depicted here goes between forty-three and forty-five down the, the, those two, uh, lots?
Correct.
Crosses and then goes between thirty-eight and forty. The work though is just needed in the right of way?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not planning on going back. What we've identified is outside of the manhole. The manhole sits right at the back edge of the right of way. So everything will be in the right of way, un- unless we have to get deeper into that manhole, then we would have to go up into the easement if we had to.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Horn?
I was just going to say, I mean, I know you've spoken with people and everybody wants to deny it. I would assume that we, unfortunately, Jacksonville Beach has been torn up back and forth recently by, uh, communications companies. I would assume that we have a general idea who is the last one in here or most recently, but the only thing that's not really, I guess, a question, but more just kind of direction to Mike and to David Miggitt and to you. But I would love to pursue as aggressively as we can, all of this money coming back to the citizens because this is not our responsibility. It's not our fault. Um, they did it. They're going to pay these subcontractors, you know, going to go to the lowest bidder. Then you're going to deal with the damage though. Um, please, yeah, cut that thing off and go around and knock on people's houses. I mean, honestly, I would go around to every single house in that area and be like, hey, please let us know if something's not working so we can start finding out who it is. Um, because I know somebody's going to try and get out of paying for this bill. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Item C.
All right. Second item is the second emergency that appeared the, uh, the day following the other emergency we just talked about. Uh, we were made aware of, uh, uh, and again, another, um, sanitary sewer issue down at America and Republic. Um, we did engage the contractor that's already working down there on America and Republic to be able to, um, to give us a cost to be able to do that since they're already working in the area. Uh, we did not, in, in, in working through, uh, the financing part of this, uh, particular one, we're not, we're going to have to end up having to pay this repair. Um, it wasn't appropriate to be able to attach it to the CRA funds that, of the project that was going on on America Drive because that was CRA project. This, while CRA collected sewer does go through it, it doesn't all belong to the CRA. So, the decision was made to bring this in front of you all to ask for, uh, an additional emergency repair to make sure that we're pulling it from the right buckets to be able to cover the costs of this. Um, I did not add a contingency to this particular project, so I'm asking for the, the ninety thousand partially because we were able to negotiate down the cost, uh, with the contractor based on as they're wrapping up the job on America. They had some free time and they were really wanting to get on this early, uh, as soon as we identified it. Um, as well as we still have contingency related to the America Drive project. So if something went left, we have some funding depending on what we may find, uh, outside of this excavation. So, we don't have any costs. We don't believe, have any belief that it'll go any higher than what we've already done. Not sure if I have other pictures. This is directly to the east of the manhole that sits right in the middle of that intersection. So, um, excavation will be in that intersection. And I think north is up. Yeah, north is up on that picture. So you can see that it's directly, uh, directly next to that manhole that's right there. So that's the item I have for consideration and, um, available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And a motion, please?
I move to reapprove an agreement with Petticoat Schmidt for Emergency Sanitary Sewer Repair at America Avenue, Republic Drive for an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Horn?
Once this starts, how long do you think it's going to take?
Um, I think they're actually already started because they were down to almost completing the America Drive, uh, America Drive project. So, we, we wanted to be able to get them in. They were actually waiting. They had actually milled the road and were getting ready to do the paving. And we stopped them because this was going to be directly next to the brand-new paving. So we held off the paving, uh, to be able to pave the final as all one piece in that intersection. So, um, just in time is where it really answers.
I'm actually very happy and we're lucky that this happened. And if it's going to happen, it's going to happen at this time. So it's actually less cost to us. So, um, you know, glad it's being done what is being done. Thank you.
Mr. Wouters?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, picking back on, uh, Councilman Horn, what precipit, what caused this?
Just the ground moves. I mean, in this particular area, you can, there were some pictures that were also attached where you could see some things moving. And so a manhole will shift or the pipe will shift. And a lot of times there's rubber boots that connect them. And they don't have to move very far before they dislodge and they'll move vertically or horizontally, which then creates a bump. And in the minute you have a bump, that's going to be a place for sediment to build up. And then over time, it's ultimately going to cause a clog and going to be a problem. So, a lot of times we can find these by, uh, using our camera crew proactively as we move through the city, uh, because we do roughly twenty percent of stormwater and twenty percent of wastewater lines every single year to be able to camera and investigate to try to prevent these issues and problems. But like I said, it still takes four or five years to be able to get through the entire system and, and then there's always work going on as we talked about earlier. So, um, we just kind of proactively are finding some of these. We've got a few more that we know of. Uh, y'all are aware with the, of the Sunshine Park, uh, um, you know, place we've got blocked off there. We held off on finishing that one to be working on, uh, Eighteenth North Drainage Issue when it became a, a news problem. So, um, we're going to get back on Sunshine Park and come up with our plan next now that we've got all our camera in and everything done down there to be able to figure out a plan to fix that issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barron? Trevor Hughes.
Good evening, Trevor Hughes, uh, Chief of Parks Development and Maintenance, the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, since, since the golf course opened in two thousand and eighteen, one of the areas that we've really focused on putting, uh, many investments in is our driving range. Uh, since opening, we put an automatic ball dispenser, we've added music, we've added shade shelters. We've added a sustainable artificial tea system. Um, all these things combined to a highly successful, highly-used driving range. Uh, last year, we did six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in revenue just on range ball sales alone. And we're expecting to exceed those numbers this year. Um, but with great success, um, comes that we, we've outgrown our infrastructure. Now, the back of the driving range currently has a hundred-foot net that protects Beach's Energy Substation, uh, the workers and the electrical components. Uh, we've reached out to some net companies. It was recommended that a hundred and twenty-five foot in height would give us about ninety-eight percent protection at the distance that we're, we're looking at. Um, so, I am coming asking, uh, to approve the RFP, uh, the vendor of, uh, Action Sports Netting to do the work. And additionally, um, we budgeted, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for this project. We have been working with a net company who about, uh, ten to twelve years ago, um, replaced the netting on the original structure and they'd been doing the maintenance on them. We asked them to give us a price. They came in and told us for three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, we can extend it twenty-five feet. And, uh, so we added a little to it to five hundred to put in our capital improvements budget. And once we put out the RFP, it come to our attention that their recommended, uh, upgrade did not meet current build standards and codes. Um, that's why the additional cost. So we're requesting the, the additional two hundred and fifty thousand from each the Golf Course Enterprise Fund and the Beaches Energy Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And can we have a motion on item one?
I move to award RFP number zero-four-dash-two-four-two-five Driving Range Net to Action Sports Netting to expand the protection provided by the Driving Range Net.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Ms. Golding?
Thank you. Um, Trevor, in the RFP, uh, project schedule, item number ten, it sta- states that the hours of work shall be from seven AM local time to six PM. And I know that our city code prohibits any construction prior to eight AM. And this also allows construction on Sunday, too. So, um, are we, are we modifying that?
We will follow our local codes and ordinance. It was, it was an oversight when we. We, we, we used, there was another RFP already in place and we used a lot of it as a backbones and that, that was an oversight on our part. Uh, we'll, we'll follow our standard uh, rules for work.
Okay, cause there's an apartment complex right next to the, the north side, right? Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mister Sutton?
Trevor, what's the um, estimated timeframe for completion from beginning to?
I, I believe it said forty-five days. I, I, I don't remember exactly. Each, each vendor was a little bit different.
And will the range need to be closed that entire time or?
It will be.
Yeah.
If we do come across the golfer that can get over that though, we need to uh, get their number. Mister Wagner?
Since it's gonna be closed, will there be some special time set aside for somebody that really needs to work on their chipping?
So you will, you will be able to, the, the chip, the chipping green and the putting green will be available.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Um, second item?
I move we approve the additional funding of two hundred and fifty thousand from Beaches Energy Services. And two hundred and fifty thousand from the Golf Course Enterprise Fund to accommodate the total cost of the project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any, Mister Jansen?
Trevor, that uh, ninety-eight percent, um, to cover that last two percent, if we stop scratch golfer Sutton from using the course. Would that cover that last two percent?
Yeah, I, I think if Councilman Sutton uh, leaves his driver at home, we should be safe.
I just wanted to clarify, you said when the golf course opened in twenty eighteen, or maybe I misheard you, but that was when it reopened. And maybe it just feels like it just opened because we were throwing so much good money after bad on that golf course. And I wanna just publicly credit you and the rest of the team for really making it. Um, we were just talking about it today, how it's actually coveted experience that um, where. People are fighting for those tee times and the fact that we're making so much money on the driving range as well, um, and it's making a positive contribution. To our community and to our budget is um, really admirable, so thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our ordinances. Director Ireland?
Alright, good evening, Mayor and Council. Heather Ireland, Planning and Development Director. The ordinance before you is for a request for a small-scale land use amendment to the comprehensive plan. Uh, the property is located. See if we have a map here. Here we go. Um, the property is located on the northern end of the golf course. The portion of the Pontefract Golf Course that's in Jacksonville Beach. Uh, there's a typo on that slide. It's not a rezoning. It's a small-scale land use amendment. It's approximately point nine one acres. Um, it ha- was identified in a previous redevelopment of the golf course uh, as future development. And a few months ago, the um, agent for the applicant came to us to discuss changing the property. Uh, from recreation open space to low-density residential. It does have an underlying zoning of RS one. Which entitles it to single-family homes per that zoning district, which if you recall, single-family homes, homes only are allowed. Uh, minimum lot size nine thousand square feet and all these setbacks and lot coverage are the same as we had before in the uh, previous land development code. Um, the maximum number of um, lots that they can fit on this property based on the size. And the required setbacks and street frontage are three lots. Um, I don't know how to use the pointy thing, so I won't, but you can see on either side of the yellow. Uh, highlighted area, there's a little gap between the property that they are requesting to change the land use. And the neighboring uh, existing developed lots. This is so the applicant can provide a buffer when they actually do develop these lots. Uh, staff has reviewed their application and finds their request consistent with the comprehensive plan and state statutes pertaining to amending the comprehensive plan. Uh, so I do wanna allow Mister Miller, who's representing the applicant, uh, to provide you with additional details on their plans for the property. And then I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Mister Mill- Miller, just give me a second to get the public hearing going. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, amending the twenty fifty comprehensive plan, future land use map. Providing for a change of future land use designations on approximately zero point nine one acres of land. Located on Ponstaleon Boulevard between Second Street South and Pontefract Boulevard from recreation open space to low-density residential. Providing for legislative findings, repeal of conflicting ordinances, separability, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance for the amendment to the text of the twenty fifty comprehensive plan is before this council for a public hearing and ad- and adoption on its first reading. Under the laws of the state of Florida, an ordinance which changes the text of any element of the twenty fifty comprehensive plan is a quasi-legislative proceeding. Is a legislative proceeding. A legislative proceeding means that a governing body is acting in its rulemaking capacity. It is the duty of the council to arrive at sound decisions regarding proposed changes to the text of the adopted twenty fifty, twenty fifty comprehensive plan. This includes receiving citizen input regarding any proposed text change. The application has been reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission for consistency with other portions of the comprehensive plan. The council may hear from all interested parties in the legislative determination of an amendment to the text of the city's twenty fifty comprehensive plan. The council's decision on a comprehensive plan amendment application is based on the criteria set forth in Florida statutes. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two twenty-six. We already heard from staff, so we will go ahead and hear from the applicant, Mister Zach Miller.
Good evening, Zach Miller, three two oh three Old Barn Court, not related to this, but I know former councilmember Stokes could hit it over the Driving Range Net. At the Jacksonville Beach Golf Course. I'd never played with Mister Sutton, I'm sure he's just as long. Um, a little bit overview, as you've heard, this is not a rezoning, this is comprehensive plan amendment. I don't think you guys have seen many comprehensive plan amendments. I think in my time in doing work in Jacksonville Beach, I've done one text amendment. Your comprehensive plan is pretty set the way it is. Um, this is an aerial view of the property. Um, you've noticed that that is um, the, the par three. Uh, that's number twelve, uh, that was only built a few years ago. Uh, immediately to the east of the property is Doctor Cornick's house, uh, immediately to the west is the Kelly House. And immediately to the south of Kelly's is a Zahari's house. I say that because we've had extensive meetings with all the neighbors in this area. Making sure they understand what we're, what we're doing here and more importantly, what we're not doing. Um, this is actually just a, a view. My, my wife took this yesterday, uh, of the, what the property looks like from Ponstaleon. Um, like a lot of the properties in Jacksonville Beach, uh, your right away is actually exceptionally wide here. I, I think it's like a hundred-foot wide right away, just to kinda give you perspective. This is another view kind of facing south. You can see through the, the, the current vegetation. You can see where the tee box is on number twelve and it kind of looks down number eleven. Um, and this actually came up in a lot of discussions, cause uh, most people don't know this property is actually in the city of Jacksonville Beach. Um, that light green line at the bottom, that is the, the county uh, boundary, so um, you tee off on number eleven. It's a long R five, and hopefully if you figure tee shot well, or if you're Mister Sutton or former councilmember Stokes, your ball lands in Dubal County. Uh, you then, if you're Mister Sutton or Mister Stokes, you go for the green and two. If you're like me, you lay up. Then you have the one hole that is actually completely within Dubal County and that's number twelve. That's the hole nearby. You make another turn. Uh, the next hole's par five, number thirteen. Again, uh, you tee off in Saint John's County if you're like Mister Sutton or Mister Stokes. Uh, you then hit your second shot and to take back into Saint John's County. The cir- circled area is um, where uh, the property that we're talking about here. I'm only gonna bring this up once, cause I have a captive audience, but I made a hole in one on this hole about three years ago. Not evidence of anything, but interesting. This is the area that uh, we're, that's subject to the application. Um, we preserved uh, the buffers on both sides. As, you know, out of respect to the existing residential development. Um, the one on the east is twenty feet uh, wide all the way through. It's uh, you know, point oh five acres. Um, that will provide access to the remaining of the golf course, but also provide an area that will never be able developed. Uh, that was out of respect to the Kelly's and the Zahari's that live in um, lot one and lot two. Uh, to the east, uh, that's uh, Doctor Cornick's house. Uh, it's a variable width. It goes from twenty to twenty-nine feet. Um, again, uh, provide access. We're gonna clear some of the underbrush there, but mostly maintain it the way it is. So their, their views won't change. Um, so why are we here? Uh, all of this property is zoned RS one. Um, that is your least intense zoning category that you have. It has been the zoning category for large, single-family lots. I think since you've had a land development code. You did recently update it. Uh, the minimum lot size was ten thousand square feet. You've reduced that to nine thousand square feet. Lot width is still uh, nine feet wide. Um, we'll get into those details a little bit in a second. Uh, this is just the intent of uh, your RS one zoning. The residential, single-family zoning district is intended to implement low-density residential land uses. And if you look at the uses that are allowed by right in there, uh, it's single-family. Uh, if you look at the conditional uses, it's things like golf course, recreation, things like that. This is why we have this application, cause it's this weird situation where we're in the comp plan as residential open, I'm sorry, recreation open space. But we're zoned RS one. Uh, this is just a list of the uh, conditional uses and then the uh, very large twenty-five-foot uh, front yard setback. Ten-foot side yard setback, thirty-foot rear yard setback, which is pretty large. Um, and then the lot coverage, minimum house size or is uh, fourteen hundred square feet. We're obviously gonna exceed that a lot. And then here's the issue. Uh, the property's been designated ROS on your comprehensive plan. Here's I can tell, and here's your staff can tell, it's been donated, located as, designated as RS for as long as you guys have had a comprehensive plan. Which was since the mid-eighties. Um, that said, it's never been used as recreation open space. This is actually an aerial of the property in nineteen ninety-four. Um, you can see all of the property that is now developed to the west was open space, or sorry, it was just cleared land and open space. And then most of the houses in that area uh, were, were, the lots weren't built upon. I think that's pretty unique in Jacksonville Beach. Jacksonville Beach has mostly been built out for its history. This is one of the few areas where you've actually seen growth and new lots come in. We'll sort of see that in history. This is just to zoom in. This is uh, from approximately, I think, two thousand four, two thousand five. You can see some of the houses have sort of migrated down Pontefract Boulevard and then uh, that's lower second. Um, you still see that over the, the west of the property, uh, no lots have been developed. Can you start? This is from two thousand and ten. Um, those lots to the west are actually zoned the same as us. They're RS one. But they're all lots of record, so that's why those lots are sixty, seventy-foot wide and six thousand, seven thousand square feet. Uh, because the lots were drawn up on Platts in the teens, twenties, and thirties. Um, Ponstaleon was actually uh, built to provide access to that and then they went through with um, the lower second to access those lots. You can barely see the tee box of what used to be thirteen, but as you can see, this property has never been used for recreation. It's never been part of the golf course. Um, this was when the development of the west was almost built out. You can see where the Kelly House is, the Zahari House. And the area around it before the par three, that again, had a hole in one, um, was not built yet. So this was approximately twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. Again, you can see the tee box of, of what is now thirteen. Um, then when the golf course was redesigned, they got rid of number ten, eleven became number ten, twelve became number eleven. They were one hole short, so they built this par three, which is again, the only hole on the golf course that is entirely in the city of Jacksonville Beach. The property was not part of the golf course, uh, but the property was used for access and staging in order to do the work on the golf course. Um, I bring this up, this is a slightly different picture. Uh, if you notice over where the Zahari's and the Kelly's house are. Originally, we were gonna have a, a bigger area subject to the application. Um, so you can see it side by side that I've circled. And uh, we, we had extensive meetings. Before we filed an application, we uh, reached out to all the neighbors in the area and had them come in and, and meet with myself and my client. And asked what were some of the concerns. The Zahari's and the Kelly's, their biggest concern was they didn't want a lot. Uh, with a fence right outside their fence, so we tried to accommodate them and then sort of cut off that triangle. And reduce the area that was gonna be subject to this application, so the area right in front of their backyard is going to remain that. Um, and this, this is what we came up with, it's subject to the application. Um, this is a preliminary lot layout plan. As you can see, uh, it's three lots. That's the maximum we can do. Um, arguably, if we had not done the buffers, we might have been able to get another lot. But we think that this size lot is a very good transition from the sixty and seventy-foot lots to the west. And the larger lots on Pontefract Boulevard, which are mostly a hundred-foot wide. Um, one lot would be fifteen thousand square feet, one would be almost twelve thousand, the other one would be over twelve thousand. That is a pretty large increase over what the minimum that's required. And this is just to zoom in. You can see, sort of see with the uh, the required setbacks in your land development code, where the boundaries of those houses would be. I, I show this, cause they're setback from both the Kelly's house and the, the Cornick's house. So from their backyards, they won't necessarily see the um, the new houses, that they're back, their um, back walls. Um, I know I've thrown a lot of information at you. Um, w- one other point, uh, cause I'm sure there'll be some questions is. Uh, both your staff and I have looked very extensively at your land development code and uh, other areas of the city. I don't think this is gonna be precedent setting. Uh, there is no other area I can find that's privately owned ROS, but is also zoned RS one. There might be a small little piece behind Adventure Landing, but I think that's been subsumed into the Adventure Landing PUD. And there's a small piece near the Marina, uh, near, I guess it's Second North and Beach Boulevard. But neither one of those would be large enough and you couldn't access it and build homes, so. This isn't something you're going to see a lot. I think this is just a interesting piece of property that was close to a golf course. Your staff designated it as ROS because it's next to the golf course. It's been zoned RS one and the intent of that is single-family. And that's all we wanna do.
Thank you, Mister Miller. I don't have any speaker cards on this item, but would anybody like to address uh, this item either for or against from the audience? Okay. We will close the public hearing, if you just wanna sit down and stay close. Before requesting a motion on this ordinance, beginning with myself, each of the members is requested to indicate for the record both the names of persons and the substance. I'm just reading the script here, guys. Forget that. So I'm asking for a motion? Well, we normally do the motion first. Okay, um, can I have a motion, please?
I move we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two twenty-six on the first reading for a small-scale future land use map amendment. To change the future land use map designation of point nine one acres from recreation open space to low-density residential. And schedule a second reading for August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Before opening the floor for discussion or questions by the council, please be reminded that our decision will be based on the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. Staff's reports, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and public input at all hearings. So we will begin council discussion, Miss Golding.
Um, so the buffer areas on each side of this, so will the entirety of that be changed? Or are those buffer areas gonna stay recreation open space?
They will stay.
They will stay recreation open space?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I know, I know Mister Miller kinda touched on it, but um, I'd just like to try to understand. I- in this particular case, so I looked at our comp plan and Strategy OS one point two point one. That says that um, that uh. The city should not allow the conversion of park and recreational open space areas into other public or private uses. Except where the public interest overrides the conservation of these lands. And then only allowable after a public hearing and demonstration by the city. That the converted area will be replaced within one year by recreation or open space land of a similar size, location, and type of uses. And so I know that the, we, we were already moving towards this property being, becoming a pocket park. The CRA's been talking about that for quite some time. There's some design work that's been done, so that was already going in that direction, so. I guess my question is, and he mentioned precedent setting, right? What's to keep somebody from coming in and saying, okay, you know, I want to um. Replace this property that we wanna change on, right? Um, with Gonzalez Park or some other park that already exists that's, you know, because the pocket park essentially. You know, was already in progress.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. Um, so as Mister Miller mentioned, this is a really unique situation. We looked.
We looked all through the property in Jacksonville Beach and could not find another situation where this request could even be made. So that's kind of number one, this is very unique. I couldn't find any documentation that the golf course or the owners or the club were ever involved in making that land use recreation open space. I think it was just done sometime in the '80s or '90s by probably staff or administration when the comp plan was first drafted, or perhaps when it was amended in its infancy. The only other areas, again, as Mr. Miller mentioned, that have any rec open space that are not owned by the city are tied up in PUDs. So it's an area that will be part of the Marina for boat parking, that's part of the recreational boat ramps, and then property in Adventure Landing behind where the new buildings will go that was already rec open space. And again, those are tied up in the PUD and what's allowed and not allowed there. The passive park that the city owns currently off South Beach Parkway and Jacksonville Drive actually consists of 13 platted lots of record in RS1. So in theory, should this council or a future council decide, you know, we want to do what we did on Sunshine Court and sell them for development, that's something that could possibly happen. Gonzalez Park, it's not platted, it has really no land entitlements in that regard, it would have to go through a lot more processes to do that, and it's owned by the city, it's a developed park. We discussed with legal if there were any other options for this kind of trade, if you will, and we could not come up with a single better alternative. And this kind of secures this property to stay as a recreation open space as it's intended, but, you know, trying to take out any kind of flexibility to make it something else. Again, this situation is so unique, I can't imagine that it would ever come up again because, again, all the property that's currently designated as recreation open space is owned by the city.
Well, I guess, but my concern was that because the pocket park is already intended to be a park, could somebody say Gonzalez Park, we're just going to use that as a replacement?
Yeah.
You know, and because it already exists.
I mean, certainly someone could ask, but I don't think that that would get any support from staff or legal in any way, shape, or form. But again, there's no one right now that would even have the need to ask it, because there's nobody other than the golf course that owns any property privately that's rec open space, other than the ones we've discussed that, again, are tied up in PUDs.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this strategy in the comp plan was intended to, so that we don't have any net loss of park space or recreation open space, right?
That's a general intent, yes. So the passive park that will hopefully soon come to fruition is larger than this property that we're looking at, the golf course, which doesn't have any environmental, you know, sensitive areas or anything like that, it's just kind of scrub land. And it would be better served as just a continuation of the residential community in that part of the beach than vacant land or expanding the golf course in any way.
And just to clarify, so those two buffer areas, they'll stay recreation open space, and that's really essentially to protect those spaces from ever having anything else done with them?
Yes, that was their intent, was to provide some separation between the existing residential homes and the new three houses.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Horn?
Just for clarification, I wasn't sure, what, you kept referencing a pocket park, but you're, are you saying here? I wasn't sure what you were, that's why I, I, I'm, go ahead.
She's referring to the passive park that's going to, it's hopefully soon, be the intersection of Jacksonville Drive and South Beach Parkway at that way, yeah, the northwest corner.
Okay, that's the one you referenced a moment ago, for some reason the council, yeah, I already got reprimanded for my thoughts on the assail of the other lot, so I won't comment any further.
Mr. Jansen?
Yeah, so Mr. Miller, you're suggesting that that variance in between the Kelly's home and this lot, that's going to be accessed for the, to the golf course, yes?
For, I'm sorry, through the chair to Councilman Jansen, yeah, for golf cart access, for staff and maintenance, not large, like, not like, trucks, trucks getting through there to get access to the homes, but for the maintenance staff to have an alternative access and golf carts to get.
Would that be also available for the community to access the golf course with their own golf carts?
Probably not.
Okay. I just wanted to say a couple things. Number one, I appreciate that you maintain the full setbacks, I think that's very important, and that those are established. Also, I really do appreciate you working with the families, going out there and knocking on their doors and getting their input. I think that's, that's a huge buy-in, and that you're sticking with the same format of housing, if you will, in that neighborhood, that's not changing. And limit it to three single-family residents. I think that's very, very important, in an era where we have multifamily homes going up like crazy, and, and so I think that you took into consideration the desires of the city and our constituents, so I do appreciate that, and that covers it, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Wouters?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, the South End Passive Park appears in our 2050 Comprehensive Plan on the map. Regardless of any action we take on this item, that will still, and has already come to fruition, basically.
Yes, unless council changes their mind and decides to dispose of the property right now, yes, it's still moving forward.
So what, let me ask you this question. This is really not a quid pro quo, whether we move ahead with this or not, the South End Park is still going to be in effect.
As of now, yes.
So why are we not requiring that new, that be replaced with new recreation open space?
There is nowhere, I mean, we searched, there's nowhere that wouldn't require the city to acquire property from a private owner at the taxpayer's expense and kind of start from scratch with a new park. No opportunities for that have presented themselves. This was honestly the only kind of solution that we could come up with to meet that requirement.
So there is no quid pro quo here?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask you this, what is the value of the land of Zero Palstelion at this time?
I have not looked that up, I would defer to either Mr. Miller or Mr. Peyton if they know.
Yes.
Through the chair to Councilman Wouters. The, this parcel has not been separated out from, there is a parcel that is, has a different RE number just for Dubal County as opposed to the rest of the golf course. I have general ideas of that value, but I don't know what this, this .91 acres is valued at, no.
Well, I can share with you, our appraiser on COJ.net has it valued at $20,000.
And, but that's for the entire parcel.
Right.
And this is only about one-sixth of that.
If we were to grant this request with three new lots based on the adjoining properties, each one of those would instantly become worth over a million dollars.
Potentially.
So I don't see what the public interest, how public interest is served by this project, particularly in light of several things. First of all, it sets a very bad precedent, and I am very concerned about Adventure Landing branching out into the Crowell Creek area and extending what they've already got their foothold in. And I know a lot of citizens are very concerned about this, too. So I would hate to see it bad, I would encourage my fellow council people to please consider the long-term ramifications of this long after we're gone. Further, I would like to say that, as we heard from our citizens here who took their time out of their day, Ms. Tifton, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Delay, regardless of the intention of the first owners, subsequent purchasers will be able to do whatever they see fit, including more opportunities for Airbnbs in our community. I don't see what we have to really gain outside of a few tax dollars, and I cannot support this. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ireland, the property's currently owned by Mr. Peyton or Ponavida or Gate or whichever.
It is Southside Boulevard Land Company.
Okay.
It's the owner, yes.
And it really seems like sort of a unique parcel here, and Ponavida could do anything with that piece of property that was in support of the golf course, conceivably, is that correct? Halfway House, bathrooms?
Certainly, anything, anything that would support the current use, yes.
Right. So, and I will point out, I think, I think this is interesting, that when the golf course was redone, the restroom facility used to be after number 12, I believe. It's on the back nine, it's currently now only after number 11. They've chosen not to redo or remove a bathroom facility. Typically, you'll see a restroom facility after half of nine holes, so after the fourth or fifth hole, and I will point out that this is after the fourth hole on the back nine, after number 13, and would make a great spot there for a bathroom. And if I were Ponavida, I would, if this were not to move through, it seems like it would make a great place to put a restroom facility in right there halfway through the back nine, reroute that golf cart path and fully utilize that space. So I think from a practical standpoint, it probably makes the most sense to move forward with this proposal. I don't see, as Councilman Wouters brought up, I don't see this as a very likely short-term vacation rental, when you're going to be talking multi-million dollar development on each of those three parcels, if that's what it's split into, three. To his point, you know, the land there is going to be probably in excess of a million dollars, and you're probably going to put something structure-wise similar to that, if not more than that, so that doesn't, in my mind, make up a short-term vacation rental or have too much of a concern for that. So I would, I would be in favor of moving forward, and I appreciate the buffers that have been left there on both the east and the west side.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes, I just want to make the point that, in my mind, when it comes to the short-term vacation rentals, I concur with Councilman Sutton that this doesn't fit the normal. I'm not saying that there aren't short-term vacation rentals that are worth millions of dollars, certainly there are, but certainly in this motif, it doesn't fit, number one. Number two, if somebody's building their dream home, we don't want to stop them because there's a short-term vacation rental problem in the city of Jacksonville Beach. The way you handle that is through the state, we get with our representatives, and we tell them, let's remove the preemptions. We don't cut somebody off from building their dream home in our city because we have a problem with short-term vacation rentals.
Mr. Horn?
Heather, the point that Councilman Wouters brought up, is there a possibility in the two areas that we've identified, other than have attached or adjacent recreational open space areas? One would be the Marina, and the other would be Adventure Landing. Is there any possibility that something like this would come in an area next to those?
The short answer is no. The long answer is, as part of the application for the Marina, they requested that land to be changed to recreation open space to support parking for boats with trailers to support the boat launch. So we, you know, the city supported that because that falls under the recreation and open space category. As far as Adventure Landing, when they made their land use changes and rezoned to a planned unit development, the area that was left as recreation open space really is that 50-foot required buffer from the wetlands. So them changing that to something else would not be supported by the city. Again, everybody can ask for whatever crazy idea they want, but it doesn't mean that it would get support from the city. That land is really necessary to remain as open space to provide that 50-foot required buffer.
Okay. And I would say that, yes, short-term vacation rentals have been a problem for the city of Jacksonville Beach. The likelihood of this becoming a short-term vacation rental, I would assume are negligible, but, you know, they're not zero. I would politely ask our council and the applicant if they could do everything they could to make sure that these become legacy family properties. But from an administrative standpoint, yeah, I just, I, you know, I don't see people building a $2 million house and then turning it into a vacation rental, and I would hope not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Mr. Jansen, revisit.
Yeah, just real quick, the, for the benefit of the city, what was the Planning Commission's result on this?
Oh, thank you for asking. They voted to approve, that recommended council that you approve.
Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Wouters, revisit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to state for the record that just on 12th Avenue South alone, there are plenty of million-dollar homes that are vacation rentals. And also, the main concern I have is the precedent it will set. So I hope this honorable council will consider the future of our community and what do we want it to look like. And in addition, being right on a golf course makes it ideal for a short-term vacation rental. People love to rent places on golf courses.
Thank you, Mr. Wouters. Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Have a good night.